Also President Schilling?
Here.
Counselor Adams?
Here.
Counselor Berianto?
Yes.
Counselor Bray?
Here.
Counselor Collins?
Fratbeck.
Counselor Fitzgerald?
Here.
Counselor Jans?
Here.
Counselor James?
Here.
Like everybody says, so moving on to the next topic and it's Gary's report on the tour of the building. So, be here and tell you about our year in Public Works. I've been asked because of the time. So, my full presentation, the packet, I'll be focusing on the accomplishments of divisions over the past year, except for the parks and the Aquatic Center which Jennifer Ward last meeting. So, we'll go ahead and get started. So, we do have nine divisions in Public Works listed up here. Our Support Services, which is a new division, and I'll get into that here in just a bit. Well, actually, it's not really new. It's kind of been renamed. Our Water Treatment, Street Storm Water and Wastewater Collection, one division. Wastewater Treatment, which is a contract, they actually manage it. Fleet Maintenance, Facilities Maintenance, Special Project Management, Parks and the Aquatic Center. So, we have staff in Public Works of 29 full-time positions. We're fully staffed. Positions open right now, and we also have 29 part-time employees. The lion's share of those part-time folks are in the Aquatic Center. So, Support Services, so this used to be called Engineering Division. At the beginning of this year, we divided or split that division into two. One called Support Services and the other Special Projects. I'll get to Special Projects in a bit. So, our Support Services Division does all the things to support our Public Works. They oversee private, I won't get too much into a lot of this, but they oversee our private infrastructure development. They approve subdivision plans for infrastructure. They manage our TMDL program. They prepare all reports for upper levels of government. And then our GIS services and Support Services. GIS really serves the entire city organization. So, our Year Review, of course, the first thing that we accomplished was the transition from Engineering Services into the Public Works Support Services Division. We launched our new digital utility maps, city organization. In the field and on their phones, be able to access information about our infrastructure, that sort of thing. That's a new capability. We also really focused on our backflow testing programs. Past year, in the past, we've not done well. You know, we've had mean 25% compliance. This, after all of our efforts, mostly efforts, we've attained a 9% compliance. We'll do even better in this coming year. And then, this division also managed, in tandem with the Jacobs folks at the wastewater treatment plant, the replacement of our UVA system, which is going to save us a lot of utility costs, electric power, and replacement parts are, and they're available. The old system is too old and replacement. This division also was the tip of the spear for clearing the Poplar Tree Lot. If you know where that is and you've drive out there recently, it's just a field bow. My understanding is the farmer who's been farming the adjacent property will be including that in their operations. So, our Water Treatment and Distribution Division, this list, I'll let you guys look at this in your packets, but it just lists out all of our facilities in the system. Our Year in Review, of course, our crews worked very hard on Phase One of our Clay Street water line replacement project, which took, replaced the 16-inch line from the reservoir, the Clay Street Complex, out to Fairview. So, that was a good learning project for them as well. A lot of our folks had not been involved in that kind of a project, so our crew not only accomplished something that would have cost us hundreds of thousands, if not maybe a million or so more, if we had bid it out. We did that internally and it was a good learning project for a lot of our folks. Our Mercer Dam merge, the action plan was updated, so it announces where the state would like us to have it. If you don't know what a turbidometer is, it's a meter in our water plant that tests, guess what, turbidity of the water. Ours, I think there's a series of three or four. Ours had been aged out and replaced those this past year. And then, the bottom line here, water line repairs as needed. It's just five words there, but it really encompasses a lot of effort from our crews. We have a system in certain areas of our city, and so we do get breaks. And our crew is really good at coming out at all hours and getting those fixed promptly and efficiently and at a minimum of turning water off on folks. They are very good. Can't be avoided, but if there's a way to avoid loss of service, our folks will find it.
How many times did they have to turn out this year to deal with something like that?
Pardon me?
How many times did they turn out to deal with one of them?
Probably a couple breaks a month.
That often?
Yeah.
That many?
Yeah. Our system, we've had, particularly had some trouble this, just the last six months or so on Douglas Street. And so, that line there needs to be replaced, and we're actively looking at a project to do that. But until then, we're kind of nursing it along. Okay, so, Street Storm Water and Wastewater Collections Division is kind of a potpourri of responsibilities. Again, I won't go through this list here, but this tells you what this division really is involved in. And at the bottom, I will point out that this is a crew that is involved in supporting our community events, like the Sounds of Summer Dallas Days and the Glow Run. They're the ones who are helping with the traffic control devices, the barricades, cones, all helps make those community events happen. So, the Year Review for this division, last summer, a flashing crosswalk with curb extensions was built on Lockrell Drive Middle School at Academy Street, which has vastly improved the safety of crossing the street at that location. This division really intended with cracked ceiling this past year, they accomplished about six miles of cracked ceiling. Maybe you've noticed more of the little spider indications all around on our streets. What that does is keeps the water from getting into the base of the street and keeps it from washing out the base. When your base gets washed out, that's when you see the asphalt starting to collapse and create potholes and alligator cracking and all of that. So, by doing cracked ceiling, we're preserving our street services and sealing them up from water damage and significantly extending the life of our streets. And as we know, it costs a lot of money to replace those, so this is good work and good time spent. So, you know, our crews are small enough by division that when we get into a big project, we help each other. Case, our Street Storm Water and Wastewater, help out the water crew with the Clay Street water line replacement, that Phase One that I addressed just a bit ago. And as I mentioned, this is our division supports our community events.
I've got to add something to that. As a former Rotarian, and I, we have some current Rotarians in the room, the Parks people are a big, big help every year when they do that setup and teardown for breakfast in the park.
Yep.
That's a lot of, a lot of effort put into that, and it makes a difference. It's a huge difference.
Absolutely. So, our Water Treatment Division, which is a contract, as I mentioned before, with Jacobs, and I won't go through all of this, but we have a five-year agreement to manage it. For the Year Review, we just, the plant manager, who was at the facility for many years, Claudia Baldwin.
Baldwin.
Pardon me?
Baldwin.
Baldwin, thank you. Retired, good for her. And Jacobs, he moved in, a new individual by the name of Caleb Trammell. I'm excited about him. He's bright, a lot of enthusiasm for our wastewater plant, and that's what you want with a wastewater plant, is their complex operations, and I think he's going to do good for us. Of course, mentioned before, Support Services, and Jacobs partnered with our UV disinfection system replacement there at the plant. A new tractor was purchased for the drying bins, so we can turn the material over and help the drying process. I won't get too much into that. New septic screen, when the raw sewage is coming into the plant sometimes, there's all kinds of, not sometimes, there's often just foreign objects in there, rats, sticks and all that. We don't want that going through our system, so there's a screen that catches all of that, and the staff at Jacobs then cleans that out on a daily basis. So, our screen had become broken and wasn't really stopping what it needed to stop, so that was replaced. So, our Fleet Maintenance Division, here's our mechanics, great guys to get to know. I showed you earlier that concrete pad where a truck was being lifted up outside, there's a picture of that happening right here, where they have been doing a lot of their operations outside because of.
I didn't see that lift there. Is that something you bring in and store away?
Yeah. Those are portable lifts, and there's four of them, but they're the heavy-duty ones. We can lift the ladder truck. Those, yeah. So, we have now five IGAs, and as you're well aware, one of the things we accomplished this year was adding the Confederate Tribes Grand Ron as a customer, so that's good. We hope to add more organizations in the future. We added a vehicle equipment and parts tracking system that'll improve our ability to, just operational efficiency in our fleet servicing. It tracks every, indicates when service is due, keeps.
Has that made an impact on your turnaround time?
What's that?
Has that made an impact on your turnaround?
It does help, yeah. It keeps track of the services that's been done in the past. In the past, all that was, to the best of their ability, done on paper and always happened. This is really easy to put information in and store it immediately, so we know a lot more about what we're doing, and it's much more efficient, and I think it speeds the process along. Also added a fuel tracking system. This replaces an old, again, paper-operated system where people would bounce between our finance department here at City Hall and then out to the yard. Track the things on paper, and our records really weren't that great. This captured it all in a system that's stored in a cloud, and we can track very well how much fuel we're using, which vehicles are using it. So, we think that's a great improvement. And then, of course, we moved shop into the H Building. Facilities Maintenance, Matt Butler there, his smiling face right there in front of our boiler downstairs in this building. Matt and his small crew take care of a lot of facilities. All listed here, I'll let you look at those later in your packet. But their Year Review, they've implemented a new software package that helps them, again, like Fleet, manage and track the projects that they're doing and keep records and so forth. And that's, I'm quite excited about how that helps his operations out. Also, he wanted me to make sure you knew that they did 21 small projects. I wasn't going to put them all on here, but some of those were the Senior Center ADA Buttons that opens doors. They did a project in the parks, one of the park buildings to replace the roof and the siding, and then the Parks Kitchen overhaul, and then installation of a new HVAC unit on top of the fire department. And then, Matt, along with others, helping them manage the Bank of America building demo and salvage, which is a pretty big undertaking. Special Projects Division, most of you know Tom here, he used to be in what we called Engineering Services. Now, he's our Special Projects Manager, which means he's managing a lot of our big infrastructure projects, managing our FEMA flood insurance program, updating storm water and sewer master plans. We've got a couple of those plans actually being updated this coming year. So, the Year in Review, again, transitioning into the new division. We just completed the Mercer Dam Fish Passage Project, and I'm happy to say that the rains over the weekend filled our reservoir, overflowing. We got this project done just in time.
Sure did.
Two pools of water fish can jump into. It's really cool. I've got pictures on my phone if you want to see it later. So, also, this is an ongoing project, you're all aware of, it's Lockrell Node Sewer Extension Project. We're nearing completion of phase, hope to be getting out to bid soon with that project. Been slowed down by some of the permits from ODOT and some, take care with Rightofway for Hawthorne Avenue with the county jurisdiction. We're working through those issues, out to bid soon. Finished the design and the bid process for the Public Works Building. My plan is to be back in front of you next week to talk more about that. So, our Year Ahead, this will wrap up my presentation. The top ten, this is my known exhaustive list, a lot going on in Public Works, but the more obvious ones, the bid and build, the Lockrell Sewer Node Extension Project, Phase One, but also, very soon, we'll be launching into the engineering and planning for Phase Two. So, those things will be working in tandem at the same time. We will be completing with the cooperation of the state of Oregon, our Mercer Dam Water Storage Rights Application Process, the Water Resources. That's taken longer than we hoped. We're trying to iron down issues with fish and wildlife on water passage during, which is a big fish run period of time, and I think we're just about to have all that ironed out. I'm hopeful that in the next few months, we'll see that permit come through. Design of our Clay Street Water Main Replacement Project, Phase Two. I've addressed this previously with earlier meetings. This phase of the project, we will be bidding out because it's much more complicated than what our crews just accomplished in Phase One. And in the Year, we're looking at completing our Clay Street Reservoir Repair and Cover Project. In fact, I believe that's going to be done maybe into this month or maybe getting into December. Our contractor's working on the second cell right now. The first cell was completed last spring, new cover put on that. That was the cell that had the big leak in it. We were losing 150,000 gallons a day out of that cell. That is fixed. We're doing the second cell, which is the northwest cell of your cell setup there, and that will be wrapping up soon. They're doing cracks, and then they'll be putting a new cover on. And then, of course, build the Public Works Building, that's the Year Ahead. Design bid and build our 2025 ADA project. We've had a fairly active program with that. This is different than what ODOT will be doing. Council's aware, because you just approved an agreement with ODOT at the last meeting. ODOT will be installing close, ramps along the state highways that go through town. We're planning to do some work on the streets, the next, yes?
Would that include the one that the lady that spoke here a few weeks ago?
Yes, on Ash Street, at the elementary school and the high school. There's several ramps that are going there. In fact, I recently met the maintenance director at the school district. They're actually planning to do one side of the street and the side of the street that the high school's on, on Ash, and they're going to be replacing that sidewalk and ramps, building ramps there. We'll be doing the other side with the ramps. We won't be replacing all the sidewalks, but yes, so helps on the way with that, yeah. And that's going to probably be the focus or the most of what we're going to do with our program this coming year there at the school.
Have we reached out to her to let her know that?
Um, that's a good point. I don't know that we have. Yeah, thank you for mentioning that.
Haven't you spoke at the school board meeting, but I don't know if they ever gave her permission after that?
Yeah, actually, now that you say that, that night that she was here, with her after she spoke with you, and I did inform her that we were planning on making that project. I just, you asked. So, then the next one is to design bid and build our Street Rehab Program Number Five. I can tell you that the focus of that's going to be some pieces of Holman and, to it.
Howe.
Howe. If you're familiar with Howe in particular, right there by the church, it's, might compete for the worst, worst one we have left. So, we're hoping to get those fixed, and there may be some additional street segments that we throw into there. We will begin our planning for that project here during the month of November for construction. So, then, design bid and build the water treatment plant filter media replacement project. We've identified a project to replace the media, which is actually the filtering material that cleans our water up. That media that we have right now in our plant has been in use for, I don't know how many years, but it's time to replace it. And with the modern design, filter media infiltration, what we're going to put in this next time, we believe it's going to expand the capacity of our processing by about 20 to 30%. So, we're very excited about that. It extends the life of the plant before having to add on to it. So, you'll probably see some of that project coming forward. I don't know if it'll make it to your level, it might, but it is just about to launch and have the design put together. And then, I've mentioned before, we're working on both our water and sewer master plans to update those. Hopefully, within the next year, we can wrap both of those up. So, and that is the end of my presentation. If you have questions, I'd be pleased to respond.
Gary, I do have a question.
Yes.
First of all, I want to thank Jennifer for an outstanding job in the Japanese garden. That was fabulous.
It was.
A lot of people showed up for that, and I teased her about some other things, but I teased her about some other things, but I won't go into that. But it was fabulous, and there's probably the best Japanese garden in the state.
I'm still getting comments from people about that, every day, just about.
Thank you.
It was the highlight of my weekend, and it's turned out, yeah.
I don't want to follow that comment now.
You're going to complain about Japanese garden?
I don't want to complain about the Japanese garden. Oh, thank you for reminding me to do that. Can you talk a little bit about where Gordon, not Gordon, where?
Godsy.
Godsy, thank you for reading my mind. Where Godsy Street fits into the Street Rehab, please?
Yeah, it's kind of its own project because we're getting state funding. In 27, I'll try, but it's not really a short subject.
It isn't, but it's a very important one, and I was disappointed that it wasn't part of your.
Yeah, in 2017, the city secured a funding agreement with the state of Oregon, ODOT, to rebuild Godsy, the entire length of Godsy and the bridge. For whatever reason I wasn't here, but the amount of money that was allotted to that, at least now, has no chance of building the whole street, much less the bridge. We have designed the bridge. The bridge itself costs way more than what we were funded. So, ODOT was asking us to release that agreement and let that funding go. We weren't really keen on doing that. We worked with them. They've agreed that we could rescale and take the money that is in that agreement and reduce the scope to be able to do the street itself, not the bridge, but the street south of the bridge, about at Olive, because the ramp up the new bridge is from Olive to the bridge. But from about Olive down to Monmouth Cut Off and a little piece of the intersection there, will now be funded by, in part, by that project, plus some of our SDCs and some money from our street fund. We, right now, before proceeding, we're waiting for the state to provide us that agreement. That is an IGA, so that will be coming back to you folks. So, you'll know when that's moving ahead because I'll be here asking you to approve that agreement. I'm hoping that soon. I had a shake your age last week, and so they're moving ahead with that, I believe they're moving ahead with that now, and so, but as soon as we have that, then we can start putting that project together. Our engineer, color engineering believes we can maybe do that this coming summer. We'll have to see.
In '25?
Yeah, the, okay. Now, the bridge, the bridge, right now, we're working with the state. They're putting together a new STIP, which is a State Transportation Improvement Program. They're putting together a new three-year STIP, I believe it's for years 27 to 30. And so, our bridge, because of its condition, is on the ODOT priority list to fund. The only thing that ODOT is funding for local governments right now is bridge replacement, and we're very high on the list. So, right now, I've been working with a project team at ODOT to helping them estimate what their project will cost. I say their project because it'll be funded by federal money, which requires what they call certified agency to construct. We are not a certified agency, so it's likely that ODOT or perhaps the county will actually build that project. That's yet to be determined, but that, for that is underway right now. So, and as soon as that's done, there may be some things we can do to the existing bridge to reduce the limitation on it, eliminate it. I'm reticent to do that now and have us drop off the priority list, and then ODOT say we're not going to fund the bigger project. So, that's where we are with that right now.
Excellent. One question back to the road. When we're fixing South Godsy, that portion of the road, will that include sidewalks and gutters and all of that?
Yeah, gutters, bike lane, the whole.
The whole beautiful portion.
Yeah, and the bridge as well. The bridge will have all of that, too.
Great. Thank you, Gary. I appreciate it. I appreciate that.
And I'm sorry it's taking longer than I want, but we're plugging away.
Well, thank you for taking the blame for that. I appreciate it. You took all the blame for that. And thank you for being my brain and remembering the name of those streets.
So, Gary, I have a question. If we get on that list for the bridge replacement by the state, can we then do a temporary repair?
That's what I'm hoping to do, yeah.
Talking about the issues we have.
Yeah, exactly. I just don't want to jeopardize our, to get, to fall out of the STIP is like almost impossible. You know, once, once ODOT has you dialed in, it's kind of golden. So, until then, though, and there are a lot of bridges in this state that need to be replaced. I think if we do something now to make our bridge look better, we might lose our place.
Right. You don't want to give them a pretext to back away.
Right. And so, everybody's aware, there's a business that is in the city just on the south side of that. of that bridge that does trucking with dump trucks and so forth. And if they have to go north, that...
Down, right?
Yeah, I live there, and for me to just drive the RV, it's the extra 10 minutes because we can't, we can't go over the bridge. So I can imagine what that does to that business.
I'm also told that the garbage service has to stop at the bridge, turn around and go back, and then catch the other side. So we really, they don't, it's a real bottleneck.
Thank you, Gary. Appreciate that.
Yes.
Gary, so if I'm to understand, there was an agreement in 2017 for, to repair the roads, obviously, seven years later. Is seven to 10 years usually, is that typical for how the repairs are done, you know?
Does it take that long?
Yeah.
Every project is its own creature. No, not, a lot of projects don't take that long. The agreement that the city signed back in 17 was good for 10 years, and then it expires. And I believe that back, still retain that expiration of 2027. So we'll need to build that within the next two years if we're going to do it, but I think we can easily do that.
So what happens to the money that's approved for that project?
It's going to be allocated to us in the new agreement. There's $1.4 million is what it is. Before this project, we, there was, it looked like maybe a paper company was going to be coming, locating on Godsey, and there was some money from Oregon that was going to assist in the project. And that, that business fell apart, and that business did, obviously, did not move to Dallas. So the project kind of stopped at that point. Since then, ODOT has wanted us to give up our 1.4. We didn't do that, and instead, now they're agreeing to amend that for us, and that's the process we're in right now. We have tentative approval by ODOT to re-scope that and to provide a new IGA to us. They tell me they're putting that together right now. So as soon as I get that, I'll bring it back to you guys.
So does that money sit there for interest, or does it get reallocated someplace else?
So it's, I can answer that, Gary. So it's money that, that is in ODOT's coffers, so the city doesn't have that money. It's money that's been agreed from ODOT to be given to the city, so right now, it's just state money that they have, you know, within their own bank accounts.
Yeah, it was part of a larger project that fell apart, and but that money has stayed there, and the agreement doesn't expire till...
2027.
But we couldn't use it because we, there's no way we're going to rebuild the whole street. As you know, the northern half isn't so bad. The southern half is awful. So that's where we're making our focus on that end.
And you've got the bottleneck of the bridge in the middle.
Yeah.
Reason it fell apart is because the railroad did not say they were responsible for improvements. The city said, "We're not responsible to fix your bridge." So that went back and forth, back and forth, back and forth, and eventually died.
So Gary, you'd mentioned that ODOT was holding up something to do with the Barbary Node Expansion earlier?
Oh, Hawthorne. Pardon me?
Hawthorne? Or on Hawthorne for the Barbary Node. Is there some holdup that ODOT has this on the...
Not Barbary or Lockrell.
Sewer permits?
No, the state's not really holding up anything there. What we're trying to work out with the state on that project is, how are we going to, how are we going to have access on Ellendale during? I think we talked with you earlier about maybe closing Ellendale down. Ultimately, ODOT recently denied that, and so it looks like we're going to be building under, under traffic. That's about doubles the length of the project, but we are looking at the possibility of boring that line in. The difficulty of that, we don't have much tolerance in the grade we have to get to maintain gravity flow. And the question is, can we get a boring company to do that and be able to, which, boring is not always an exact science. So, but our engineers are looking at that now. I'm hoping we can do that because that would revolutionize the project, but we don't have an answer on that yet.
Gary, can you talk about the Levens and Ellendale Signalization Project and kind of what we're waiting on for that and when the anticipated construction is?
Yeah, yeah, so we've applied for a Safe Routes to School grant for Levens and Ellendale in their funding range of two to two and a half million dollars. We are, we've made it through all, there are two rounds, and we are expecting to learn, I think it's January, whether that grant will be awarded to us. I believe it's our direction. If that's awarded or not, we're going to go ahead with the project. We'll probably do some sort of internal financing if we need to, but it's our hope to be able to build that this coming year.
If we do get the grant, will that cover pretty much the entirety of the project, or will it be more like a mix?
It'll be most of it. We do have some contributions from some of the developments to the west that, I don't know, Brian, it's probably eight to 10% of it all totaled, might be paid by those entities based on traffic studies for the traffic that they'll contribute to the intersection.
Yeah, we've had a couple of land use actions recently where that came up, so yeah.
So, but the rest of it, if we don't get the grant, but the grant itself, if we can get, you know, between two and 2.5 million, that is our rest of the project. So, yeah, we should be able to pull that off.
Certainly the lion's share.
Yeah, and we'll have to do that, of course, when school's out. So...
Anything else for Gary?
Well, that was fun. Thanks, guys. Love talking about that stuff.
Thank you, Gary.
Hey, is there anything else we wanted to talk about? Okay, we'll have a recess and re...